Turn of God our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this very moment in time. And God, we pause to give respect to those in Las Vegas, all who are suffering, all those who have passed, and for the tragedies all over this world, as well as these United States. Now, Father, we say thank you for things being as well as they are. And Father, we pray now, in the name of Jesus, that you would allow your peace to rest in this meeting as we do the business of your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Langley, I apologize. Your name, all of a sudden, just...
That's fine.
I was having one of those senior minutes. Okay, we're down to the conflict of interest. Does any commissioner have any conflict that they would like to disclose at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to item number D, the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add, we need to, I think, have a word or two about the military air rights because they're beginning to return again. Just to let people know that there are meetings going on involving this.
Okay.
Unless there's objection.
We'll move that to item number 21. And there is a public hearing, not a public hearing, but there is an informational meeting going on tonight here in Washington. There's one tomorrow night in Columbia, North Carolina. Okay, any other changes?
Mr. Waters, I would like to move, or for you to consider moving the, under items for discussion, the first one, property sale, 1240 Cal Farm Road, to move that down to items for decisions, for decision, which would be 22. I have an offer on that property that I got about an hour and a half ago.
Okay, we'll do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have an item I'd like to remove.
All right.
The one having to do with, what number is that? Concealed carry? I'd like to remove that tonight and bring it back later.
Okay, that's...
Thirteen.
Pardon? Number thirteen. Okay. So we're moving item number one to item number 22. We're adding 21 concerning the U.S. Air Force or the military air rights, and we're eliminating item number 13. Any other comments, changes? Would the, could we have the motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
All right.
I will make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Okay. Commissioner?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Agenda's approved. We're down to the public hearing, and I think we have one person that's registered, and I believe that's Ms. Emma Howard.
I told you.
Just a reminder, we have a three-minute limitation.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Ms...
Ms. Emma.
Yes.
Now, this...
Oh, you're just doing public, you're just doing public comments.
Okay.
Not CDBG grant.
No.
You're doing public comments.
All right, since you're out there, we're gonna go ahead and...
Thank you.
Go ahead and do that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Emma W. Howard, and I have a house in a town of Bellhaven, address 465 West Pentecost Street, and the house is not occupied. I was devastated when I received my tax statement that I was charged $145 for solid waste. I feel that is very, very unfair for me to have to pay that fee for a house that no one lives in. I am very concerned about the matter. I'm a senior citizen and on a fixed income. Thanks for your consideration.
Did you have anyone else on the public comments? Okay, we'll get back, we're technically just a little bit, see what the official time is. That one back there says five forty. Does anybody else have a better time?
I have five thirty-seven.
Five thirty-seven.
Five thirty-seven.
That's what I got.
Are we supposed to wait till the five forty time?
Yep.
Depends on how it was advertised.
I think it was five thirty.
Five thirty is in there. So without a...
Was it advertised at five thirty?
Go for it.
Okay, well, Ben, why don't you step up there? We need a motion to go into the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ben Rogers. I'm a planner with the Mideast Commission here in Washington. The Mideast Commission's gonna be assisting the county with the CDBG, that's Community Development Block Grant, if you're not familiar, application that's due on October 20th. Part of that process requires two public hearings. This being our first of the two public hearings, there's some information that's required to be presented before the public hearing and take any comment if there are any. So I'm just gonna read this, read this information for you guys. Again, the purpose of this hearing is to explain the CDBG program. The second one, that will be held on October 19th at 3:00, will be more project-specific. So this one's kind of general information regarding the CDBG program. There are a number of different types of funds available through the CDBG program. The first one's the CDBG Infrastructure Grants for Public Water and Waste Water Infrastructure. In 2013, the North Carolina General Assembly allocated CDBG funds to the infrastructure program and transferred funds to the Division of Water Infrastructure to the administrator. This temporarily ended the Housing Rehabilitation Program portion of the CDBG program. However, the legislature has once again decided to bring back funds for the housing program. The second type is the Economic Development Funds. These are, these provide grants to local governments that partner with a pro-profit business to bring public infrastructure improvements and/or building renovation services. The third one is the CDBG Demolition Grants. The goal of this is for prevention or elimination of urban blight. The fourth is the CDBG Downtown Redevelopment Fund. This is designed for infrastructure upgrades of downtown buildings in order to meet current code requirements. And then the final type is the CDBG grant is for disaster recovery, which is what the county's gonna be applying for later this month. Again, Beaufort County intends to submit an application for up to $1 million, which may include up to 5% for program management to complete the activities pursuant to recovery from damage resulting from Hurricane Matthew. The applications may include single-family homeowner rehabilitation and reconstruction, mobile home repair or replacement, acquisition for development of affordable housing, temporary rental assistance, flood insurance assistance, community recovery activities, or infrastructure in support of community recovery plans. All activities must address the federal, national objective of low to moderate income benefit or urgent need. The program, the proposed program will not involuntarily displace or temporarily relocate individuals as a result of the program, and the public is encouraged to attend public hearings and provide any comment on proposed and past uses of CDBG funds in the county. Again, this is just general information. The second public hearing that's required will be more project-specific. The application is due on October 20th. That second public hearing will be on Thursday, October 19th at 3:00, and we'll get into more detail then with what that application, the county's plans for this application. So that's the information for this, and again, we'll get more specific at the next public hearing.
Okay, at this time, the floor is open for anybody that would like to make a public comment as it relates to the community block grant. Does anyone like to say, we're gonna open it for one minute, make sure nobody... Mara, would you, would you ask if there's anyone out there? I think they can hear over the light speaker system.
There's only one gentleman, and he said not.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ben. We need a motion to come out of the public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? Is there, was there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor coming out, raise your hand. Okay. The next item is the public hearing on the solar farm moratorium. And need a motion to go into...
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. David, you want to lead us off into the public hearing?
Yes, sir. At our last meeting on September the 5th, 2017, the you, the Commissioners, passed an ordinance imposing a moratorium on the acceptance, processing, and consideration of applications for solar arrays or solar farms pursuant to NC General Statute, Section 153A, 340, prevent eight. That moratorium was to, was anticipated that a minimum of 365 days or one year would be required to complete the process, so that it is a, would be a one-year situation. Because it was longer than 60 days, we are required to have two public hearings, and the next public hearing would be, I assume, at our next meeting, which, which would be in November. So we're here tonight to see whether there are any public comments about the moratorium.
I have two on the list. The first one is Mara Beasley. And remind you, we are holding those to three minutes.
First, I'd like to thank you for the proposed solar moratorium voted to be put in place last month. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our group and others in Beaufort County who want to see a moratorium in place with acceptable ordinances and setbacks implemented. We know the process is going to be long and arduous, and we thank you for your commitment to this. Invenergy stated at a public meeting last month that solar panels will be placed across various field ditches that will be cleared out by shovel. This statement seemed ridiculous to me, knowing how much modern equipment we have, but it would be like holding tonight's meeting outside in a tent with lanterns. Environmental issues that will change the landscape as a whole and increased drainage problems many communities are already faced with need to be resolved upfront. Now is not the time to rubber stamp anything until it has been reviewed by the Soil and Water Conservation and other environmental regulators. You have the ability to speak with existing landowners that are now beside current solar facilities in our county, and I would ask that you interview those people. I have had individuals tell me that because of the panels going across the ditches and not being cleared out, that there has been water puddling on roads, and then they have also had overflow of drainage in their area. So now is an opportunity, I feel like, that you can speak with your neighbors. A large amount of tax revenue is at stake, and how that shortfall is going to be made up needs to be determined beforehand. We are not willing to bear the tax burden of lost agricultural jobs or tax revenue loss from taking farmland out of production. I respect your decision to put the moratorium in place, and I thank you for going ahead and setting another public hearing date. We absolutely understand that many hours of testimony and research are required to develop beneficial ordinances for all parties involved. I would also like to thank the citizens of Beaufort County who have actively taken part in the interest of this county and this county's future, and the media for informing the public in regards to the solar moratorium and ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Beasley?
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you for opening the meeting with prayer. I believe this is an aspect that makes Beaufort County such a great place to live. And it seems to me, as you do the work of the people, you are dedicated to protecting the people of Beaufort County and especially those providing Christian education. I also want to thank you for the moratorium that you've put in place, but I encourage you to do more. I have an article, and it is from the Delmarva Farmer. It's an editorial, it's an agribusiness newspaper in Delaware, Maryland, and Virginia. And the title of it is "Solar Reps Flying Under Radar." It talks of the prospect of solar development gobbling up the eastern shore farmland. It speaks of the Richfield Solar Project, and it says it's, was filed by a company called Invenergy, based in Chicago. It goes on to say that the company did not hold a community outreach meeting, did not hold a community outreach meeting, and the adjacent landowners were informed of the project when they received a letter from the County Planning and Zoning Commission advising them of the Board of Appeals hearing within a few days. It seems like a very similar scenario to what Invenergy has come and done here. You know, they fly under the radar, and then all of a sudden pop up when I have all their ducks in a row, leaving the communities that they're coming to be good neighbors in scrambling. So I feel like, as representatives and, and community members, that this is not a company that we want to, you know, move into our county and that we want to be neighbors with. And I don't understand how we can be good neighbors with people like that. So I just want you to please consider all those things at hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during the public hearing? If no one else would like to speak, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion to come out of the closed public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you. We're down to item number G, item, items for presentation, the Bonner Scholarship Award Presentation. Bob?
Mr. Chairman, there, there's a people here that want to speak on an item that's coming up later on in the agenda, and I don't think they're aware that they can speak during the public comments period. If they are, we need to ask again if they want, have an issue that they want to speak on that's gonna come up tonight, otherwise they won't be able to speak while we're deliberating the issue.
Is, is there anyone else? Well, we've closed the, I mean, we've gone past the public comments at this point in time.
They can always be reopened. I mean, we're...
Is there any, is there anyone that would like to speak during the public comments? Does any, does anybody have any objections to opening? Okay.
Let him talk. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak here tonight. My name is Burl Bren. I live on Hubbey Rec Road in Bellhaven. I've been living there for 49 years. The property right next to me used to be a little restaurant there, Hubbey Rec, which has been torn down a long time ago, and some people bought it and had a few sailboats out there. And up until this date, we've got along real well. About two or three months ago, it's supposed to have been sold, and a guy comes down from New Jersey, and he's, it was a tiki bar there, a little outdoor bar, and since then, he's had several bands over, DJs every Saturday night, so forth, then a DJ or a band. The county noise ordinance is supposed to be six, six decimals, from nine o'clock at night till nine o'clock in the morning. The deputy sheriffs have been over, and you'll by the time, they've been real nice, real professional, but they've had the noise meter there. It's, all the time, it's registered better than six and a half, and it has gone up to 7.35. And I know of two different occasions, they've been over three times. They asked them to cut it down, they cut the noise down, the sheriff leaves or the deputy leaves, before they get out the end of the road, it's right back up. This past Saturday night, the same thing. The last two, two songs he played Saturday night at 12:00, I think they were trying to get back at me, you could hear them up here to Washington. I went to church Sunday. I have people that goes to church where I go. They live out on the main highway, is about a mile and a quarter. They said they could hear it at their heist. Across the creek where I live is a mile and a quarter wide, diagonally across, it's probably a mile and a three-quarters on both directions, people have asked me about it. Another, Eric Schooner's point, people say they hear it all the time, and it's probably three-quarters a mile through the woods. The people, the people that runs it, they're asked for, they're trying to get a liquor permit. I reckon if you, if you drunk, it don't matter if you're on liquor or beer, or no matter what you're doing, you're drunk. And they hoop and holler from 8:00 at night to 12, or sometimes 2:00. And if you drank from 8:00 to 12:00 or 2:00 in the morning, you're driving under influence. You buy all the residents down my road, or you're older people, they need to rest, and it's no way in the world you can rest during that. You sit in your heist, and you don't have to hear it, you can feel it, the vibrations. The people has asked, understand they've, that they're to come before y'all and ask where they can do this ever, every Saturday night, have a band or band. But it's no different than a band or DJ. They stay open every night from 12, I mean, or every Saturday night from 12 to 2:00, and they hoop in and holler. This is right under my window. It's not right for the community.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bren. Okay, now we'll go to item number G, the Bonner Scholarship Award Presentation. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Appreciate you letting us present tonight. Let me say just a couple of words, the, especially for the public, is that Beaufort County gets their insurance coverage through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' Risk Management Pools.
Excuse me, excuse me one second. Can we have that back door closed?
And since the early 1980s, this fund has been able to provide valuable risk management services to our member counties across the state. One of our early trustees for the Risk Management Pools was a gentleman, but I don't need, I'm sure everybody's heard his name here, and that's Frank Bonner. And Mr. Bonner, reading the legacy he left here in Beaufort County, but his legacy's been statewide, because soon after his passing, and we started a memorial scholarship fund in his name. And every year, we select a member of our risk management community from across the state that works hard to help prevent accidents from occurring in our member counties to be the recipient of a Frank Bonner Scholarship. And that pays for them to attend the Public Risk Management Institute. This year will be held in San Antonio, Texas, in fact, starting Monday. And please denounce tonight that your own risk manager, Jennifer Banks, is the 2017 recipient of the Frank Bonner Scholarship. So I'd like to bring her... We've got this nice framed certificate for her, but I think she's probably gonna be interested in the check that is actually taken back. And with that, if you have any other questions, that concludes our presentation for her.
Thank you, Bob, and congratulations, Jennifer. The next item on our agenda is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Valerie, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Valerie Kynes. I'm the Executive Director of Ruth's House, which is Beaufort County's domestic violence shelter. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It is an epidemic affecting individuals, families, and the community, and the consequences can cross generations and last lifetimes. In Beaufort County, Ruth's House is a faith-based, community-driven, nonprofit organization whose mission is to interrupt the cycle of family violence by providing services for victims, safe shelter, court advocacy, counseling, and community outreach. It also provides a 24-hour crisis line. In 2016, Ruth's House provided safe haven for 55 women, 37 children, served 16 men, provided court advocacy and counseling services to over 541, and responded to 230 crisis calls. As part of its mission to increase awareness of domestic violence and its impact on the community, Ruth's House presents the following resolution. Whereas approximately one-fourth of women in the United States will experience domestic violence at some point in her life, and whereas domestic violence is one of the most chronically under-reported crimes with only approximately one-fourth of all incidents reported to law enforcement, and whereas domestic violence victims experience physical and mental health-related consequences at far greater rates than those who have not been abused, and whereas the economic burden of domestic violence in North Carolina is over $307 million annually in direct medical costs and loss of productivity, and whereas 15.5 million children in the United States live in families where domestic violence occurs, and whereas witnessing violence between parents or caregivers is the strongest risk factor of transmitting violent behavior from one generation to the next, and these children are more likely than other children to die before the age of five, and whereas domestic violence is not limited by gender, age, ethnicity, economic status, education, religion, or sexual orientation, and whereas public awareness has the potential to increase the identification and reporting of domestic abuse and can act as a catalyst to promote education and long-term prevention. Now therefore be it resolved that the Beaufort County, North Carolina Board of Commissioners hereby observes October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges all citizens of the county to participate in enhancing awareness of the negative impact of domestic violence on children, families, and communities. Adopted this second day of October, 2017.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd be honored and proud to make a motion to accept this resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Bren?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Buzio. All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you for what you do. Okay, we're down to the items for consent. Any item that you would like to have removed for further discussion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Booth and a second by Commissioner Buzio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Unanimous.
I always vote against this.
I thought you were going to break your tree.
I thought you had a tree.
I caught myself.
I think you actually ought to log it up that I can't.
Reverse that vote. Under objection. Six to one vote.
We'll let, we'll let the record be six to one. All right, we're down to items for discussion, and we are moving the first item. We're down to item number two, which is the breakdown of nonprofit solid waste tax billing. Commissioner Richardson.
Oh, okay. We, we started off, this has to do with the billing for trash that the commissioners set up into an enterprise fund, $145 a month that's added to your tax bill. And the first go-around on this, we had about 400 people were on the list. So we went back and did a computer program. I asked for more information. And now we've got about 1,800 people on the list, and when I say on the list, these are, started off as being nonprofits, because for some reason, the county decided that it wouldn't bill nonprofits for trash collection. Well, that's not the way it was done. The commissioners reversed that. Now we have about 1,800 people on the list, and my request is that this list be refined, because the list now has questionable items on it, people who probably should be paying. You cannot identify the whole basis for why some are not paying and some are paying. And we have things on here like sick, infirm, and my understanding is that that was put on here because of people who are entitled under the statutes to a lower tax reduction. But there's nowhere in there that says you get free trash collection. So these people are on the list, and they're supposedly paying their $145. But there's a lot of other things on the list that are highly questionable. When we supposedly refined the list, about half of the categories on here are other. Some of those others are paying $145 track tax fee or trash fee, and some of the others are not paying $145 tax fee. We have cases on here where some municipalities are not paying for some locations. It's just, it's just not the kind of a list that is useful. And what my request was initially, and is still a request, is that we refine this list so that we have some categories on here. Number one, the commissioners need to know, at least this commissioner wants to know, the people that were added to the list that were picked up as having to start paying a trash fee, and those that are nonprofits or for whatever reason are not on the list, that have trash receptacles and generate trash that are not paying trash. Otherwise, there's no control on this. We don't know what we're doing, is what it comes down to. And if someone came in and complained, how would we sort through this 1,800-person list? Now, is Bobby here?
I'm standing here.
All right. Now, I was told by the, by the tax assessor a month or so ago when this started, that we had asked our tax people to write a program to take care of this that would sort through our tax records and come up with, at that time, two lists. One, the new people who are paying, and two, the people that are not paying, who are, who look like they perhaps could be paying. Nonprofits, or whatever you want to call them. And nonprofits have been categorized as state offices, some individuals, some county offices, which we wouldn't charge ourselves, but some municipal offices. So I, as a commissioner, am just not satisfied that we're doing a good job in knowing who and why we're charging this to. And my question to the commissioners is, if we paid somebody to do a, a computer program to sort this, why all of a sudden has the list grown from 400 to 1,800? This, this thing needs to be refined so you can pick up the list and tell what you're doing and, and screen it to see maybe if, if there are people on the non-pay list that perhaps should be paying.
Bren, have you had any conversation with Bobby?
I have, and Commissioner Richardson and I talked a little bit briefly before the meeting. The layout that you had in regards to the list that Mr. Parker provided, there's a column in there that talks about other and sick and affirmed and municipal or county. Those are actually, like Commissioner Richardson said, they're actually tax-related, not solid waste-related. I'm not sure why that actually got on the sheet. Part of the reason Mr. Parker explained to me was that there are a lot of others in there, is that the farragut system defaults to other in the category. So if you are eligible for the elderly exemption under your tax rate, which the state allows, then they would plug in that code, aged and affirmed. There are a couple others. There's the circuit breaker. There's veterans. There are certain things that allow you to have an exemption on your taxes for certain things. Like Mr. Richardson said, it's not for utility, utilities, however. So I'm not really sure why that's on there, but what Mr. Parker said was, when the system brought over, when we, when we went from Keystone to farragut, when it brought it over, Keystone defaults to other. So any, any entity in that list that was exempt by either being a county government, because we don't pay taxes, or a city government that doesn't pay taxes, or someone who had one of those exemptions, in some cases, it pulled it over, and in other cases, it just defaulted to other. So we can certainly work on that. I think they're working on that as they go through the list. This board, several meetings ago, voted to clarify that language in that every improved parcel, now that doesn't include vacant land, every improved parcel in Beaufort County would be charged the solid waste fee because the county pays for all solid waste disposal. Again, some folks will say, well, I pay the city because they pick up my trash, and that's true. But you are paying the city or the provider simply the labor to pick it up. When they transfer that to the transfer, when they take that to the transfer station, the county is paying the tipping fees, and that is how you recover the cost of the tipping fees in the convenience sites, is through this fee that's charged to everyone throughout the county. So anyone who has an improved property is charged that, unless you have a contracted pickup service that pays the full rate. If it's a commercial service, like businesses and industries have a commercial service that picks it up, and they pay the entire amount. So you can come in and say, here's my, here's my paperwork. I do pay the full amount. My tipping fees are being paid in my bill, and then Mr. Parker will reverse that out. This is a new process for us, so essentially, we build everybody, and then there's an obligation for folks to come in and show us that, no, I have this, and, and I shouldn't be charged. One of the questions that you heard tonight was, from Ms. Howard, was, I have a piece of property, and I have a house on it. The consideration that the tax office is looking at is, is that piece of property, could that piece of property be lived in? Could somebody, could you rent that property? If it's not a livable structure, then they would look at that and say, if it's not livable, then we would not charge you, because nobody would be there generating solid waste. So that's the opportunity to clear that as well. But, but that's kind of where that is, and we'll continue to work with Mr. Parker on...
Well, yeah, and the problem I have with it is, if I can't look at the list and tell why you're not paying your solid waste fee, I mean, I just want fairness out of this, then how can the tax office look at it and tell you why you're not paying your solid waste fee? And you can say, well, I got a lot more data and information. Well, all that's public information. Why can't it be presented in a form that's understandable to everybody? So, you know, we may be still losing a lot of money in this thing, as far as we know. And, you know, they, he did send bills to everybody that he thought should be paying it, but if you look at this list with 1,800 names on it, you've probably got 1,200 names on here that are paying zero.
Right. And, and some of those don't like, and some of them should.
Yeah.
Like, like, like even some of our properties, where we don't like, in, in our complex right here, we don't pay because we have a dumpster, and we pay the full cost on a dumpster. But we have satellite facilities that we, that we own, that the county owns, that we will pay that fee, because the county's not exempt from that fee either.
Oh, really?
Because it is a solid waste fee that, that funds the solid waste fund.
I got you.
And that's why you'll see some of the cities, the city stuff on there, they're exempt because they have, there's Mr. Parker, they have dumpsters, or in some facilities, they may not have a dumpster. So anybody who doesn't have a dumpster or a commercial pickup is charged that, regardless of, of their tax status, whether they're a nonprofit, whether they pay county taxes. Again, it goes back to its utility. You don't get free water because you're a nonprofit. You don't get free electricity. You don't get free garbage pickup as well.
Chairman?
Yes.
Brian, what companies do we have here in Beaufort County that pick up and pay their own tipping fee?
Let's see. You've got Packer, Pacar.
Davids.
Now Davids has some commercial, but David also picks up residential. On the residential side, we're paying that tipping fee, so any residential that's picked up. So any, any franchised group that's picking up business or commercial trash is paying the full ride. Mr. Parker, do you know of any others that we've missed?
I think you were covering pretty much.
Okay. SDR? SDR.
Well, what, what, my question is, what do we need to do to get this into a more refined list with better explanations for why people aren't paying?
I, I think from, and not to speak for Mr. Parker, but I think from, from what we will know as we get through this first billing cycle, we will have a, we'll be able to generate for you a list of people who have, or of entities that have shown us that they have a business relationship with a contract hauler who is paying the full price. Otherwise, everybody pays. So the list we would generate would be from that.
I think we brought this up, it's not going to be perfect the first year, but when we go back and see all the ones we released, all the ones that are listed, we're going to make a pretty close, next year, a pretty close list, that's what's correct. We're still going to have some stragglers. We probably have stragglers in the solid waste. But I think it will be about a year right next year, and we'll spend a lot of time, they said, when I could look at the dumpsters, if you say you have dumpsters, they might not have dumpsters.
Mr. Chairman?
Ah, yes, Commissioner B.
Mr. Parker, person, person that has their private pickup, do they need to contact you to get, get off of that list that, that, for the $145?
If you have a house or business that is not, that's solid waste, and it's just picked up, I had David Associates, someone that ever come in, come in and take it out, you need to pay that solid waste.
If David, you're saying if David, if a private vendor pick it up, then the resident still owed the $145 tipping fee?
Churches, businesses. Now, if some churches have dumpsters, and then let the trash from the church and the partial disconnect right there, so releasing those.
Releasing those.
Mm-hmm.
But if you're, but, okay, but if you're private, for example, if I live on Jones Road, and I got parkers picking up my, my garbage, I still had to pay the $145?
We will send you a bill.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Down where I'm, on a railroad, same thing. I pay Davids to pick up my trash, but I'm still going to the dump. I got to care branches and different things like that, so...
Do you still pay a solid waste?
I do.
I pay a solid waste, and I have garbage disposal. I let through the door and rolls out, but I pay him solid waste, I pay a solid waste to the county, and I pay back garbage disposal.
Well, can we print out a list of those that are exempted?
I will, if I can narrow it down to just the ones that are exempted.
I mean, we paid all this money for this computer system. It's got to be able to do something. I mean, we just paid three quarters of a million dollars.
You're absolutely right.
Well, I had a chance to talk with Wyn a little bit this afternoon before the meeting. He was in here, and Wyn says that we already have people that are asking how to get exempt. So the list is really not going to be good until probably December the 31st, because I'm assuming each one of those are going to try to get it in before the end of the year.
We have a lot of people ask for it, and we go out and look, and they do not have a dumpster. They need to pay, and living in the house, they need to pay $145, and that's what we're doing. I think that is, that we will be concerned, is to go out and look for it if we have any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
But there still should be a list from the billing. I mean, we've done a tax billing. There should be a list from the present tax billing of people that are exempted.
Well, what you gave us at the last meeting is the total, that's the reason we have 1,800. What, what I'm talking about is that, is that the people now are coming in, asking for the exemption, and they're having to follow up.
This is what we bill.
Okay.
This is what we bill.
Yeah, but next year, we'll get another list. I want this year's list of exemptions. There's got to be a list of exemptions. You've done a tax billing. How did you do the tax billing? How did, how did you know exempt?
We have a list of exemptions, but we were looking for exemptions that would still have to have the solid waste on it. We can give you a list of exemptions, but we'll not show the solid waste on it. You've got a list of exemptions in here.
We got, but a list of exempt from solid waste, right?
We can give you probably a list of exempt from solid waste, that are exemptions. Exemptions, exempt from solid waste. That's what you asked.
Yeah. That's one of the things that I want. That may not be all I want, but that's, that's the first thing I want.
I, I don't have my list with me, but if I remember correctly, do you have zeros in the, in the last column on some? If there's a zero, does that mean they're exempt?
That's correct.
Okay.
But you got a category on here. This has been categorized as other.
Other.
And when you go down this list, there's about 1,200 names on there that are other. What is other? Is your other the same as his other?
I think, again, let's, let's don't, let's don't mix our nomenclature. The, the exemption, when you say exemption, what we think about is an exemption from tax status. So you may be exempt from a portion of your taxes because you're a senior citizen, you meet the, you meet the age and income requirements, or you may be exempt from a portion of your property taxes because you're a veteran, a disabled veteran, or, or a part of the circuit breaker or something like that. Exemptions don't apply, we just have to be careful when we say exemption. When you say exemptions, he's going to give you the exemption.
No, I'm referring to exemptions from the, from paying the $145.
Paying the $145, and anybody who's not paying the $145 is someone who has a commercial pickup that is paying the full freight.
There's about 12 of them here, 100 of them then here then, on this list. I mean, that's, I don't think there's that many.
What I was going to ask is that you've clarified, is that when we say exemption, we could be talking about taxes. We're not necessarily talking about $145 waste fee. So you got, I agree with you. You got to be very careful how you explain and ask the questions.
Taxes and solid waste.
It's one thing, but you could, you'd be exempt from taxes, but you're still paying a waste fee because you don't have a commercial pickup, where they're paying the tipping fee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Bren?
I have a question for Bobby. If a person owns a house, and he rented three months out of the year, and it stays vacant for the rest of the year, nine months, how does that work as far as...
The house is livable, and I think you got, the commissioners said that it's a livable property, we charge them $145.
Even though there's nobody living there?
Well, nobody has to live there. This livable house has got water, it's got power.
But there's nobody, there's nobody there that's creating solid waste?
Because it's a livable property, it can be rented anytime during the year. That's been back, that started with 1993.
If it's got improvements on the property?
No land is...
Any, anything else before we move to the next item?
No, we got that list. We'll be good.
Okay. Item number three is the Finance Committee update, and that's you, I assume, and Brian?
Yes, sir. I'll handle that tonight. Just to let you know, Anita's not playing hooky. She actually Friday, or Thursday night, actually fell at her house and hit her head, and, and so she's essentially under concussion protocol. Her doctor has her out until, for two more days, so. But she's doing okay, just, just a little dizzy, and, but, so she's not in today. So give you an update on the Finance Committee report. As you recall, we have a Finance Committee meeting, and, and after that Finance Committee meeting, we always give an update to the board, to the full board about what went on. So from that meeting on September the 19th, there were, we talked about the sales tax audit. You'll recall that there's a sales tax audit that we're under by the state. They're, they're doing that across the state. They're doing that across the state, not only with public entities, but with private entities as well. The gentleman who was scheduled to come down and do our sales tax audit actually was involved in a car accident in Beaufort County. Was transported to the hospital and had some injuries. So he will be a while before he is back. So that project is ongoing. Mr. Jeff Best, who is the?
I'm getting some feedback, and I'd ask that you be patient and listen.
Mr. Jeff Best, who is the principal of the auditing firm that's currently doing our 1617 audit, gave an update to the Finance Committee about where they were. Again, they are moving forward with that audit and doing what they are required to do. They are still waiting on the numbers from the state of North Carolina. That always holds us up a little bit, because we have to get numbers from the state. They're the only ones who can get us on DSS and the Health Department on those numbers. So we also gave, yeah, also gave an update, or we gave an update on the 2008 Geo School Bond closeout. You'll recall we, this board refinanced some school bonds. Just updated the committee on that. As Davenport did that for us, Davenport Financial did that for us. They gave us an estimate at the time it came before this board of $140,449,000 in savings over the life of those bonds. When the actual closing occurred and all the bonds were sold, it was actually $140,149. So there was a delta of $300. So they were, they were right on where they needed to be. So that was an update. There was also an update on the county services transitioning, where we're moving our banking services to First National Bank. That's probably going to be a six to nine process as we go through that. The committee was updated on that. We also updated the committee on the borrowing package, the 1718 fiscal year borrowing package. Ms. Radcliffe and I went and met with Tim Ramhawke several weeks ago. He is the section chief of the debt, the local debt group for the local government commission. We laid out the projects that the board had approved under the financing. He said essentially that the local government commission, or that, or that local governments across North Carolina were financing these kind of projects every day, and the local government commission was approving those projects every day. They understand clearly that these are capital projects. They are not ongoing operating expenses. They are capital projects. We reviewed all those with him. He did indicate that they had received some comments from, from some local folks voicing some opposition to that. As part of the application process, we will get those comments. Those comments will be given to us. We'll be able to reply to those comments. The question I had to him was, it was my understanding that the LGC was the technical branch. It looked at financing to make sure that it was statutorily appropriate, and that you met all the standards. And that was their function. And it was not their function to engage in a philosophical debate about how a local board of commissioners paid for projects. And he agreed that that was exactly what the LGC's function was, and that local decisions regarding how you deal with your finances, whether you pay cash, whether you finance, or whatever you do, is a local decision made by the governing body. The next thing we did was we talked about collateral, because we're going in this proposed borrowing package. It is an asset collateral, such that you're pledging the asset, not the borrowing cap, not the borrowing power or taxing authority of the board. So we talked about that collateral, and we talked about reimbursable projects. There was a reimbursement resolution that was passed by this board that essentially allows us to move forward with some of those projects and then reimburse ourselves once the financing comes through. We have said from the beginning that we're not going to get too far out on a limb, and we were going to bring those back to you for this board to decide how much you wanted to do reimbursement financing before you got final approval from LGC, which we're anticipating in January. You've got two agenda items, or you've got an agenda item that addresses both of these items on your agenda, and we'll get to that a little later. As also part of our normal Finance Committee pieces, the committee members review travel expenses and reimbursements. They also were giving an update on Moody's of our, of an update. Moody's is one of the financial groups that rate entities. And we recently got our notice that we had, that Moody's kept us at our AA3 rating. So we didn't go up, we didn't go down. Their comment was that the credit position for Beaufort County is good. The notable credit factors include a very strong financial position, a negligible pension liability, and a manageable debt burden. The credit position reflects a considerable tax base and inadequate socioeconomic profile. These are the folks that rate your bonds when you sell them. So they've kept us where we, kept us where we were before. Next regular meeting for the Finance Committee is December the 19th, this year at 3:00 PM. Thank you for that. Any questions from the report?
Any, any questions of Brian? All right. Item number four is the manager's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just a couple of things to give you an update on. You'll see in the, in your agenda, there's a note regarding a state auditor's visit. So I wanted to just kind of give you that timeline and talk to you about that. On August the 3rd, I received a request from the State Auditor's Office for copies of the closing statements, appraisals, deeds, and other related documents regarding the purchase of the Wrights Creek Phase II property and the Beaufort County Community College Public Safety Complex property purchase. The auditor, the state auditor stated that they had received an anonymous complaint on the state hotline regarding these purchases. He also stated that they had received a similar complaint about the Motorola Radio Project, but already had a copy of that contract. On August the 23rd and the 24th, Mr. Barry Long, who is the supervisor of the Special Investigations Unit of the State Auditor's Office, and another auditor, visited to individually interview each commissioner, Vic Williams, and myself. The county attorney and I met with the auditors before my interview, and although they declined to provide specifics, they indicated that they were investigating complaints received through the state hotline generally regarding the purchase of the Wrights Creek Phase II property, the Beaufort County Community College Public Safety Complex property, the Motorola Radio Project, and the Sheriff's Office Drug Buy Fund. On September the 18th and the 19th, Mr. Long and another auditor returned to interview the Sheriff's Office staff regarding the drug buy fund. And on the afternoon of the 19th, Mr. Long met with Chairman Waters and myself for a wrap-up of their work. Mr. Long stated that he and his staff had investigated all the allegations made, and their investigation was unable to substantiate any of the allegations. He stated that he considered the investigation closed. He further stated that they would not be issuing an investigative findings report since they only issue a report when allegations are substantiated. Wanted to present that to you and answer any questions the board may have.
Any, any questions from the commissioners as it relates to the exit interview that we had? Okay. You want to go to item number two under your update?
Yes, sir. Just to give you a quick update on that. We've got some customer service training scheduled with our staff. We're doing about, we're going to do about 75 folks on some customer service training. That'll be October the 20th, and the 24th, and the 27th. And then there's some strategic planning that the folks in N C State are going to help us with. That's on November the 7th. We'd certainly encourage the board, if you'd like to participate in that. The department heads will be participating in that process. Essentially, what that does is we'll go through the process of establishing mission, vision, and core values. So we'd love for you to participate in that, if you would. That's going to be on November the 7th. It'll be an all-day process. We'll be out at the Community College doing that. But what it does is it helps us talk about and define what our mission, what our goals, and what our core values are. So when we have folks making decisions, you know, you look at the chart, you look at that thing hanging on the wall, and it says, "These are our core values. This is what we believe, and this is how we make our decisions." So.
October the 7th, you said?
November the 7th.
November the 7th.
Yes.
What's the time at the college?
We're starting, I think they're going to start at 8:30 and run to 5:00.
You know which building?
Not yet. No, sir. We'll be glad to put that out.
Okay.
And then one, one final thing I do have for you. I was having this conversation with Dr. Phipps today. You may recall, there is, recently, the General Assembly, or in the last session of the General Assembly, put out some funding for what they call the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund. It was established by Section Law 201757, Section 5.3. And what it does is it has put $30 million in available funding this fiscal year, with a maximum award of $15 million for any entity, for new capital projects. These are only Tier One counties that are eligible to apply for this. It has to be new capital projects, which is defined as new facility construction, major facility renovation, or facility rehabilitation. And only projects that address critical deficiencies will be considered. The application deadline on this is a pretty short timeframe. It's October the 11th. There is a matching requirement on this. $1 in local funds for every $3 in grant funds, so it's a 2575 match. One of the things that we are working through right now, Dr. Phipps says, they've discussed, they've discussed some projects that may be eligible for it. One of the concerns we have right now is that there's a note on this, and we haven't been able to get clarification from DPI. It's extremely difficult to get to talk to somebody at DPI right now. But they have a note that says, "If a county receives grant funding awarded from the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund, the county will be ineligible to receive allocations from the Public School Building Capital Fund, which are allocated during a five-year period, beginning with the fiscal year these grants were awarded." So for the next five years, you can't draw down money from that. What, if that's our lottery funds, we don't want to play with this at all. But we can't get a clear definition from them yet, and we're working on that. Dr. Phipps is working on that. But if this is something that, that would not impact us on that, it may be something that would be worth looking at. Again, there's a very short timeframe on it. A lot of the Tier One counties are not going to be able to put things together fast enough to do this. Next year, they are, there's another funding cycle, the same, and it's still Tier One counties, but it goes to $75 million, same criteria. And then in 1920, Tier Two counties become eligible for it. So we're looking at that. If, if, if there's an opportunity, what we might ask you to do is come back together with a joint meeting of the school board to talk about those. Just not sure where this shakes out yet, but wanted you to know about it.
Commissioner Booth?
On the match, do the school board pay, or do the county commissioners pay?
You, the county commissioners pay for all capital.
So what we're saying now, if we, if we take this money, then it could affect lottery funds?
Well, that's what we don't know yet. That's the question. Because there are two pieces, there's, you know, they gave us a link. On the application, there's a link, and it says, "Go to this link to see the funds." And when you pull it up, it shows both our old ADM funds, not average daily membership funds, but, but what they, the old corporate tax, the old corporate tax rate that we used to get. They call them ADM funds. And then the lottery proceeds. So it shows both of those on the sheet. And that's what we're trying to get clarification from DPI about is.
Okay.
Is it just, and you know, we've got $4,000 left in our, in our ADM fund. And so we'd be glad to give up that $4,000 to get a million. But, but we're not willing to do that for five years' worth of the $450,000 to $500,000 worth of lottery funds we draw down. So, so that's something we've got to clarify before we can even attempt to move forward on something like that.
That's what, that's what I was headed with.
How many years have you been on commission?
Oh, too long.
Too long. You knew that.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to make sure we didn't mess with the lottery fund.
Any, any other questions or comments?
I just want to clarify lottery funds. What do we doubt now on lottery funds and percentage? Doesn't that percentage keep dropping? We're not getting what you were promised.
Well, you're not.
You're not getting much of a promise.
You're right. And I don't know that percentage. Yeah, I don't know where that percentage is off the top of my head. The real, the real sad part about it is, and it, you know, the folks at the Lottery Commission are not eligible, are not really allowed to say that publicly. But first of all, when the General Assembly put that in play, they said 60, 60% or 40%?
40%.
Was supposed to go to school?
No, no, it was 60. It was 60. It was not 40.
Okay.
So there was, there was a large amount that was supposed to go to, dedicated for school capital funding. And then they started reducing that. So over the years, they've reduced that. I'm sorry.
Whereas they found out how to get their hands on the money.
Well, not necessarily that. They did do that, but also the amount of funds, you would, you would assume that when you're bringing new revenue in through the lottery, which was new revenue to the state, that they would take those new funds and they would add it on top of the education money that they were currently giving to education. Well, instead of doing that, they supplanted the funds that they were already given. So they said, "Well, if we're drawing, say, a million dollars in lottery funds, then we're going to take a million dollars out, put this in here, and we're going to use this million dollars for something else." So they supplanted the funds. And that's as clear as it comes. They, they did not add that additional on top to try to better the funding stream for, for public schools.
And I think it's important for the residents to know that.
It, it is, because, because when you say it's an education lottery, it.
It really is.
Good sales gimmick, that's all it is.
It really is.
Right. But, but that is something the Association of County Commissioners continually works on, and is continually fighting to try to, try to get that back the way it should be.
Any other discussion? Okay. We'll move into items for decision now. The first one we have is a noise permit. Vivian Wolf.
Yes, sir. I am trying to get a permit to have entertainment at the Punggok Creek Tiki Bar. It's outside of Bellhaven. We try to do music every other Saturday night. I have a DJ some Saturday night, so that's why I'm asking for the permit for every Saturday.
Okay. Any, any questions?
I have. What is the closest resident to your tiki bar? How far is it?
I'm not sure how many feet. It's a large yard. It's across the large yard to the back of us.
100 feet, 200 feet?
Probably a couple of hundred feet.
Are there many residents?
There are quite a few residents down there, and I have had complaints from one.
I noticed that this sheet says incidents of previous noise ordinance citations or complaints.
Have not had any citations.
You haven't had it, but you've had the sheriff down there several times?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have accommodated them and done what they've asked.
Well, were you here earlier for the public comments, Bart?
No, sir.
Well, that, that we have people who say that you have not accommodated them.
Then I would have gotten a citation.
No. The sheriff is elected, and he's very reluctant to give tickets to people that vote for him. So we've had problems with this before. We had a situation down on Highway 17 South that they virtually never gave him a ticket, although there were many, many minutes.
I mean, they've asked for me to turn it down. I have accommodated that.
Well, the chief deputy is here, and I really think we should, we should hear from him.
I think so, too.
Is Charlie?
Putting him on his bar. Gets the big bucks.
Yes. You sure can. Commissioner Brand's got a question.
Sir?
Chief, how many times have you been, has your people been down to the tiki bar in Bellhaven about a noise complaint?
There's been nine calls.
Nine calls?
With the latest being on the 30th of September, and then the first one going back to July 22nd.
And the complaint was, it wasn't any violence involved in it, just the loud noise?
Loud noise.
And what did you figure that the noise level was?
That, that I'm not sure of. There are documented incidences recently that the guys have gone down there with the noise meter. And there have been readings that have been taken out through one of the complaints. I don't see Mr., oh, there he is right there. One of the complainants that have come that have spoken to me, that I believe spoke to a couple of commissioners, is that when the Sheriff's Office would go, sometimes before we even get to the call, then the music will get cut down. And then when the patrol vehicle leaves the area, then they'll cut the music back up. So I think that that is part of the deal. When it comes to the citations, is that just like anything else, is that we will cite for a violation that we have and that we see in front of us, but we're not going to cite for something when somebody can go and speak to a magistrate and have the charges taken out on their own. So then even that goes back to the club back on 17 South, where the noise ordinance that we have really was crafted and put into place because of that establishment, that it puts the, it puts us in a situation of what we can and can't cite for, and what we can and can write for, which is pretty, you know, it's pretty specific when it comes to what we're going to do and what we're not going to do. A lot of it has to do with, and, and, you know, even for, for any instances, that we've got to have a complainant that is willing to be the number one witness. Not a witness alongside of law enforcement, but the witness that goes before the judge to talk about the complaint. And a lot of times, when, when noise complaint issues comes up, we just, we don't have that. I don't think that this is particularly a case. I don't think that this is particularly a case like that, but that is a case when it comes to a lot of the noise ordinance. Not that the sheriff is an elected official, and we won't write this because of that.
I appreciate you clarifying that, Charlie, because I had heard that before. I had forgotten it. But I know that we've had problems in the past when there were egregious noise things, and people weren't charged. And the ordinance is written so that the individual can file those charges himself.
That is correct. It's a misdemeanor level offense. So if something happens and we can't handle it or do not handle it that night, the way that the complaining party thinks is appropriate, they can speak to a magistrate on their own and take out a misdemeanor level of charge on that.
Charlie, I've got one other question. How many times, you've been down there seven times. How many times have you got to go down there before you say you just got to shut it down?
Well, you know, it doesn't matter how many times we respond to a certain call. We've got to have a violation that we can hang our hat on before we're going to affect, you know, somebody's rights to do whatever they can legally do. But a lot of this stuff is that, you know, I put it to everybody, does anybody in this room speed? I'm pretty sure everybody can raise their hand and say, "Yes, we all speed," but you've got to speed in front of a law enforcement officer to get stopped and cited for that to happen. And a lot of times, that's the same thing with the noise complaint.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I'm not really against Ms. Wooler having what she wants, but I think that she should go back and negotiate with the neighbors and come back to us with something like, "We've agreed that if this thing is shut down at a certain time at night, we've agreed to keep the noise level down. We have the neighbors on board." I could support something like that, but I can't support just out of hand in the face of public complaints granting this.
Well, it's very unusual for this group to approve this kind of a permit. I've been a commissioner for three years, and the only permit that we've approved for noise was for one event. It was for like a wedding, or for July the 4th, or some fireworks. But I mean, this is asking for Saturday from now until eternity. I mean, this thing does not even have a due date on it or a termination date.
Oh, well, when I filled it out, they told me not to put the dates on, you know, just to go for every Saturday.
I've been a commissioner for 18 years, so I've seen this, I've seen it, I've seen it. And it's really bad for those who live where they live. They have nowhere to go, and so when it starts to booming, the only thing they can do is sit there and listen to it. And so unless y'all come to some agreement, trust me, I'll never vote for it. I mean, because I understand. I really understand that. Because I know what it's like when the young folk just simply come by with the stereos cranked in their vehicles, and they start vibrating everything, so.
Yeah.
And then if you're in your residence, and it's just nonstop, that's asking a bit much.
We only go from 8 until midnight, four hours every other Saturday night.
Commissioner Bren?
Can I ask Mr. Bren a question?
Yes, you can.
Would you be happy if the noise level stayed below 6 decibels?
I think it's 60.
60. I think there's a zero behind that. It's a 6.
I would if it's other, it's not just the noise. They get drunk, and they holler and all that. They have going to 2:00 in the morning. The wall goes over there and asks them to cut it down before they get around the corner, which is a quarter of a mile right back up. They come back, one gets it twice, they've been there three different times the same night. Saturday night, the last time the guy was there, they shut down at 12:00. And they had it, cut it down because he'd been there three times. And the last two songs they played, you could hear it in Washington. They were just getting back to me. That's all it was.
No, sir. Some of the songs are louder with more bass, and it's the bass that they have asked me to turn down.
Like Mr. Langley said, when your wall gets banging, it's too loud.
Okay. We're down to the point, unless we get a motion pretty quick from somebody, we're going to end this discussion. Is there a motion to approve this?
I've got a question. I have one.
No, it's going to, it's...
I have to agree with Commissioner Richardson. I think that y'all ought to get together and come to some compromise and bring it back next month, and let's see what y'all's compromise is.
Okay. I'm willing to do that.
Jeez.
I'll say one thing.
Yes, sir.
First time this thing was opened, the man that's supposed to be owning it, he had a little trailer backed up right near my property. I stepped over and I asked him. He said, "I can do any damn thing I want to," and that's exactly what he told me.
Okay. We're going to end this discussion. Thank you. And it lies for...
Next month.
A lack of a motion. If you guys get together and you come back with something, we will entertain that at our next meeting. Thank you. All right. We're down to item number two, the Schedule of Evaluation Adoption. Bobby? And if you will wait until this door gets closed.
Okay.
Wait just... Okay, Bobby?
Mr. Commissioners, we've been through the process of our values, schedule of values. We entered, we gave it to you back on the last Commissioners' Meeting in September. We advertised it twice, and we had a public hearing, as you remember, on the 25th of September. We now are here to, I'm now here now to ask you to adopt the Schedule of Values for the 2018 revaluation, which is going on right now.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langley, and a second by Commissioner Booth. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
I think my best.
Thank you. Bobby? I think everybody's read your textbook. Yeah. All right. We're down to item number four, the Request for Performance Grant. Martin? And I told you we'd try to get you on before the break. He complained to me that he always has to show up after the break.
Oh, jeez. Good evening, Commissioners. I've been working with a project called Garden, a New Jersey company that's looking to relocate either to Tennessee or North Carolina. And they've been successful in getting the state of North Carolina to, it's not approved, but say that they would be eligible for $50,000, 1NC grant. To acquire this grant, they need a one-third match from the local community, and the county and the city are the ones that would provide that match. Project Garden designs, manufactures wood, plastic, steel, and multi-material point-of-purchase displays for Fortune 500 consumer good companies such as retail stores, fast food locations, beverage, and personal care brands. They also, interestingly, manufacture products for recycling and waste collection equipment, which they sell through a sister company. Currently, as I said, they are researching North Carolina and Tennessee as potential locations, and Washington is the finalist in the North Carolina race. They're relocating from New Jersey to be more competitive on a national basis. The project, they plan to invest $1.8 million in facilities and about half a million dollars in equipment over the next three, well, in three years, from, say, 2017 to 2019. When you look at the tax revenue that would be collected over a two-year period, that'd be about $9,000. During the same period, the three-year period, the company plans to employ 52 new people, sorry, create 52 new jobs, an average salary of $33,729. And however, two of those jobs would be relocated from New Jersey. The average wage rate is slightly lower than the county, average wage rate of $35,474 per annum. However, a lot of these jobs, assembly jobs, are needed in the county for the people who earn less income than the average. The performance grant would only be paid after the county has collected property taxes for the particular year, and would not ever exceed the property taxes paid in a particular year. So the quest is that you approve the county manager and the county attorney to work with Project Garden to provide a performance grant along with the city of Washington for the 30% match needed for the state of North Carolina, $50,000 Project Garden 1NC grant. Do you have any questions?
My only question is, is the city going to give up some of their taxes as part of this grant?
They meet next Monday, and it will be on that agenda. And I currently have, I can't say they will or they won't before they vote, but they are taking it into consideration.
Brian?
Just one comment. This would have to come back to you with a public hearing under the economic development statutes. We would come back to you if this were formalized. It would come back to you as a board for a public hearing to receive public comment, where we lay everything out, and then you vote to approve or not approve that.
And there is an actual application process for the 1NC grant as well.
This is simply letting us move forward. If you say right now, "No, we don't want to do that," then that's fine, but this lets us move down that process. But again, it will still come back to you under statute with a public hearing.
I've got a question. Is, I know the jobs, you said two of them will be relocated.
Right.
The rest, the other 31 jobs will be both county or surrounding county residents. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Another thing, is there any way possible that we could negotiate with these people to bring it up to at least our minimum of $35,000 a year?
Right.
I mean, we can, I mean, that's not enough, but it's where our baseline is. Is that possible?
I have pointed that out to them, obviously, and we're in that discussion, yes. I think that may come back in the future proceedings.
Well, seeing that, I would make a motion that we move forward if you need a motion with this project.
Yeah, we need a motion, but we made the motion. Let's see if there's another question.
Yeah.
Most of these positions are just assembly jobs, right?
Right. Yes.
When you, are you saying 30% of the 50, so we're talking about a total of 15 between the city?
15 between the two, yeah.
Okay. And we normally split it.
Yeah. Well, it's based on the tax rate, so it's approximately...
I figured that it was like 51.4% as a county.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's still debated between North Carolina and New Jersey?
Sorry, that is a typo. That is a typo. It should say between North Carolina and Tennessee.
Tennessee.
It's still debated between North Carolina and Tennessee?
Yeah.
The maximum rate they would receive would be a third of the $50,000 as match money. That's the cap.
Right, yeah. Yes. However, having said that, if the $50,000 from the state is based on the wage, the average wage rate, if they did bring the average rate back up, that could increase the state.
But it's a minimum.
It's, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Now we'll take a motion.
I make a motion that we move forward with the process.
Second.
Okay. I think the second came down here.
Okay.
Commissioner Booth made the motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner Buzio. All those in, well, one last chance, any questions? All right. We'll take a vote. All those in favor proceeding with a grant, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous, and let's see. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go get them.
Since we're getting into Christina's, she's got several items on here, we're going to go ahead and take our 15-minute break, and we'll be back at 7:10. Okay. We'll start back up. We're at item number five, the Utility Mutual Aid Agreement. Christina?
Good evening, Commissioners. What I've presented to you today is our two mutual aid agreements. There are two organizations that are active in North Carolina that facilitate mutual aid agreements between utilities. In the packet that I've given you, I started out with a little language that says, "We've all seen photos and videos of electric trucks from various electric companies and municipalities lined up to respond quickly to forecasted weather events." And we've all seen that on the news. That's because years ago, the electrical companies realized the benefits of working together and to pool their resources and their equipment in times of need. The utility companies have now done this as well. There are many companies and utilities in North Carolina. North Carolina Water Warren currently has over 90 members, and the EWWN has over 56 members. So again, this is something that most utilities have done previously. It has just never been presented to the Board of Commissioners in Beaufort County. I believe that it's a good resource for us if we were to have a major weather event or any type of major catastrophe with our utility. Of course, people in eastern North Carolina are going to help, but what this does is this has something in writing that allows us to track via, you know, certain accounting techniques and things like that, so that we can follow back on the paper trail. Many years ago, as most of you remember, when the storm hit and entire houses were lost, the water services were popped, and so we had water services. It would have been very nice if a surrounding or neighboring utility could have sent in a crew with a work truck, people that are highly trained, people that have their certifications, and we would have been able, they would have been able to assist us to go around and to recover that much faster. What I've presented to you are the membership applications for both of these organizations. No additional funds are required. I would just ask that you would allow us to join these organizations. One thing of note, North Carolina Water Warren, actually, they have a person who is in the North Carolina Emergency Management, EOC, when it's operational in Raleigh, so that they are right there at the heart of it. So they would be able to respond if we needed assistance or if other utilities needed assistance. And again, this is strictly voluntary.
Motion to approve.
Things were needed here.
Is there an associated cost to this?
Very minimal. EWWN has, I think it's like a $75 fee. They also offer continuing ed classes that employees would be able to go to throughout the year, so it helps to cover some of those costs.
Have a motion by Commissioner Langley.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Buzio. Is there any other questions? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the agreement, raise your right hand.
I'm not in favor of it. I didn't raise my right hand.
Okay. Bren?
I'll go first.
Okay. Those opposed?
Second one.
All right. Item number six, Water District 1.
Yes, Commissioners, this is something that was presented a few months ago. This is a safety project that was identified as a need in the water department. We currently utilize gas chlorine as a disinfection method for the water system. Due to safety concerns, we investigated the possibility of receiving funding to convert from gas chlorine to liquid chlorine, and we were extremely blessed that we did receive quite a bit of funding from the North Carolina State Agency regarding this. The next is District 1, District 5, District 6, as well as District 7. These districts are identified because these are the districts where we actually have either booster pump stations or water treatment plants that actually have the facilities where the gas chlorine is used. So all of these applications included going in and making adjustments to the buildings as well as pumps and different supply methods that would need to change to convert from a gas chlorine to liquid chlorine. Again, looking at, and I'm just going to provide you some numbers of all of these together to realize what a true blessing it is that we have this. There were 32 applicants across the state that submitted for these funds that totaled approximately $56 million. Of that, they awarded $17 million in grants, and Beaufort County received $3.8 million of that $17 million of grant money. $39 million of loan money was awarded, and we received two. So looking at the total grant award, Beaufort County received grant funds that were 23% of the total award that was awarded across the entire state. So for grant funding level of that for a safety project is really a good thing, so we're very excited for that. The first item on your agenda is District 1. District 1 has a grant of $101,100 and a loan of $133,700. Again, remember, that is a 20-year loan at 0% interest. So that would be a total debt service that we would pay back of just over $6,000 per year.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Langley. Seconded by Commissioner Bren. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. You want to go to the next one?
Yes, sir. That would be District Four, the Bath Township. Again, that's a funding package of $733,500 and grant $244,500 and 0% loan for a 20-year term.
Okay. All right, got a motion by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Brian. All those, any, all those in favor? No discussion?
No.
All right, unanimous. You want to go to the next one? Why don't you just go right to the dollar mark?
All of them, District Five, $401,100 in grant, $133,700 in 20-year loan.
Motion to approve. Question by Commissioner Langley.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. You're next.
District Six, $1,115,000 grant and $1,115,000 loan at 0% 20-year.
Any questions?
I'm moved.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Brian and seconded by Buzzio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right.
And District Seven, $504,000 grant and $168,000 loan.
Oh, Lordy.
Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Langley.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. We've done them fairly fast. Did we get them all in?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you got them all in.
Thank you very much.
You got them all in.
I'm not sure who's responsible for doing all the paperwork, but this is a real...
I do.
It's a real hit. You guys are smiling. Thank you.
I'd smile, too.
All right, we're down to item number 11, the removal of the driver's license requirement at the tax collector's office. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Commissioner. It had a couple complaints about going in to pay, some folks paying their tax bill, and that kind of hit me the wrong way because people trying to pay early, but they had to show their driver's license. And I thought, well, that's kind of odd. You can mail it in, you can put it in a drop box. But if you show up in person, that's what you gotta do. But it's really, it doesn't seem to be a big issue. My understanding that it's only like 50 that's come back out of 55,000. But however, I've gained a little more information tonight from the county manager that it may be legally and by statute that we still need to have the driver's license presented when you are paying your bill.
Yes. Brian?
Again, this was, as my understanding is, a policy that was put in place by the board several years ago. And what they do is they ask for, when you present the check, they ask for your driver's license or confirm that that's your check. Part of the criminal statute for prime effecia evidence of you being the person that tried to pass a fraudulent check is that you were identified if you were the check passer. There's a separate section that addresses the prime effecia evidence if it's mailed or if it's in a drop box. There's a different section. I am not an attorney, so what I did, the next best thing I could, I called the DA, and I said, "This is gonna be on the agenda. What are your thoughts? Would it hinder your ability to prosecute a case?" He said, "I'd need to go back and review the statute." He said, "But what I would say to you is, anything that you can do to try to keep, eliminate somebody from passing a bad check or being able to identify them, I would recommend to the board that they leave that in there." So that was his recommendation. And Commissioner Evans and I had that conversation as well prior, so...
How about remove that item at this time, please?
All right. Anybody got a problem with that?
No.
We'll remove that item. All right, we're down to item number 14, the hospital authority board information. Pardon?
Twelve.
Twelve.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Reporting policy for the purchase orders, Commissioner Richardson.
The, on this, I'll try to make this as brief as I can. All I want you to do is to roll over the unfilled purchase orders and the amounts when you do the budget and report it to the commissioners. Because that's money that in theory would come out. You may have appropriated a year before, but it's going to reduce the fund balance, maybe by just a few hundred thousand dollars, but there should be some big purchase orders in there.
Right, how about this? How about we report to you at the end of the fiscal year what are outstanding? Because like Anita mentioned at the last meeting, some of those may get cleared before the end of the month. And if we were to put those in the budget ordinance, just say, "Well, this money, we may double dip if we don't..."
Yeah, that's fine with me. All I want to do is I just want to know.
We're happy to do that. It's easy for us to do that. We'll do that for you.
All right, now we're going to item number 14, the hospital authority board information. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, we've asked Commissioner Buzzio for this several times, and he keeps dragging his feet. It was a year ago that we asked for it the last time, and we still don't have any answers. I'm looking for my stuff here in the book.
Six months ago.
Sir?
Page 84.
84. Well, what I'm asking for is that the hospital board present copies of the most recent bank statements to the commissioners. And Commissioner Buzzio, is that a problem?
I'll bring it up at my board meeting in October.
Sir, it's not up to your board meeting. It becomes public information when the board gets it. It is public information. Don't forget, I was the chairman of this board. I do know how it operates. And when it becomes public information, you can present it to the county commissioners or to the whole public. You're subject to the open meetings law. So why are you dragging your feet?
Commissioner Richardson, how about go ahead and talk about number two and number three, and then let the chairman address both of them, or all three of them?
Require the hospital authority board to report on the recovery of approximately $300,000 of the $1.8 million that was paid a year ago for the, I guess the best thing to do is call it the error in Medicare/Medicaid billing. Viden Hospital collected some of that money, and my question is, have you asked Viden to repay that money to the board? All right? The last one is require the hospital authority board to produce the audit that was supposed to be completed approximately one year ago.
Okay. Commissioner Buzzio?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. On item number one, the board, at the end of August 31st, is holding $4.5 million. So about $4.55 million. On issue number two, let me explain that so the public understands that. During the period of three or four months in 2011, before the acquisition of Beaufort Hospital by Viden, Beaufort Hospital was submitting bills to Palmetto, which is a billing agency for the government. And they were making the right codes, they were putting the right codes in. And Palmetto transposed the codes. So for that period of time, approximately $1.8 million was paid to the hospital. Probably kept them afloat because they were on the verge of bankruptcy. They probably were on the verge of bankruptcy. And if Viden hadn't acquired them, they would have closed. So about a year ago, two years ago, they finally caught up with it. They advised us that that had happened, and we went ahead and paid $1.8 million. Any discussions with Viden are being handled by attorneys. And I advise our attorneys, that information until the issue is settled will not be made public. Those have been only discussed in closed sessions.
Hold on. I'm gonna answer that when you finish.
On the audit, on the review, financial review, the last financial review of the hospital authority was done when Mr. Richardson, Commissioner Richardson, excuse me, was chairman, and that was for the period of September 1st, 2011 through August 4, 2015. And a report was provided to the board authority shortly after that. I have, with my CFO of the hospital authority, not the one for the county, have reached out to the same certified public accountants, which is Russell Jones and Griffith. And I don't have board approval yet, and our meeting will be in October. The board hopefully will approve us signing a contract. And I basically verbally accepted it based upon approval of, and I told them that, approval of the hospital authority board for the period of August 5th, opening of business 2015 to the date of our meeting of October, at least the 23rd.
October 23rd?
Yeah, I'll tell you right in a second. October 25th. And we'll go to the date of October 25th.
Where's that gonna be?
It's here. So that's when the, at that point, the board will approve that, and the financial review will be done the same way it was done on the 15th. So those are the three issues that I've responded to.
Going back to item number one, how many bank accounts are included in that $4.8 million?
One. Same bank account that you...
No, there's two bank accounts.
Yeah, there is another bank account which is controlled, yes.
All right, how much money is in that bank account?
About $100,000.
$100,000? All right. The, you know, this is a request to get in public, that the commissioners be presented with those bank statements.
They are a separate hospital authority, number one, separate board of this, from this board. And anything that we release is upon the approval, not my approval, the approval of the hospital authority board, the same way that it was done, and you know this, when you were chairman of that board. I don't have the authority to release anything without the vote of the board.
But...
And in case it has to do with legal issues, it has to be approved.
Are you subject to the open meetings law?
Certainly we are.
Okay, then...
The meeting is open, it's published.
Do all of the, do all of the members of the board get a copy of the bank statements?
Correct.
Then the bank statements become public information.
They get them at the board meeting.
They're public information, and there's no reason why the commissioners can't have it. And I really don't understand why you don't want us to have it.
Mr. Chairman, the last request we got, an FOI request, our attorneys handled that, and they said it had to be released under an FOI.
I'm sorry, but attorneys are wrong. I know that attorney.
That's right, I forgot you're an attorney.
I've been around the block a few times. The, I'll be taking care of this in a different manner.
Good, do that.
Required the hospital board on the recovery of the $300,000. Now, what happened when that, when the, we gave the hospital to Viden was, Viden kept collecting money that should have come to the trust fund. Viden has never turned one dime of that money over to the hospital board without the hospital board making a demand for the money. And my question to you is real plain. Have you asked Viden to return the money that belongs to the county?
The, Viden has, when money that they have received has been turned over to the hospital authority board, this issue is in the hands of the attorneys. I am not allowed to discuss it.
That's just an excuse. Has the board taken action to demand the return of the money that belongs to the taxpayers of Beaufort County in the amount of approximately $300,000? And it's a yes or no?
It's not a yes or no.
Has the board voted? No, the board hasn't voted because you, as chairman, are derelict in your duties in getting our money. You know, it's just that simple. Your big buddies with Viden, you couldn't possibly ask them to do the right thing.
If it wasn't for Viden, that hospital would be closed, and the residents...
That's not what we're discussing. We're discussing your honesty.
You want to say that again?
Yeah.
So it gets in a minute.
Oh, I want it in a minute. You're not doing your job as chairman of that hospital board in protecting the taxpayers of this county.
Are you saying I'm dishonest?
I'm saying that it is honest to ask people to pay their honest debts. That's what I'm saying.
You say I was dishonest.
I said you're being dishonest when you don't do your fiduciary duty. That's in the law. That's your fiduciary duty.
We, there is a scheduled board meeting for October the 25th, and...
23rd, 25th.
The board hasn't had that in over a year.
There's been no issues to discuss, and it hasn't been a year.
The issues have been there. I made these requests a year ago at an April meeting. I've got a copy of it right here with me.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I haven't finished yet. Third item I have not addressed of the audit. You promised, sitting in that very chair a year ago, that we were gonna have an audit within a matter of a few months. That was a year ago, and we still don't have an audit.
It's not an audit, it's a financial review.
Whatever you want to call it.
Do you know what an audit is?
Anything you want to call it. An audit's not very much these days.
The review was, is scheduled to be done once the board gives the approval to do it. But the board has discussed it, but it's not been approved yet to do, to do the review, just like was done before.
Why don't you want to do an audit, or a review, or whatever you want to call it?
We're doing a review.
I think, I think the board will approve doing the review. We discussed it, we just haven't...
You said, you guys said the same thing a year ago.
Well, I think the approach has been taken is that we wanted to wait until we had all of the issues solved or resolved before we did the final review.
I'm still waiting.
All right. Just be patient. Just be patient. Any, anyone else have any comment on it? All right. We'll move to item number 15, the partnership of the Sands lease agreement. Brian, I guess you're up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you'll recall, it's your September the 5th regular meeting. The board received and reviewed the lease agreement for the partnership of the Sands property. This is where the North Carolina Estuary is located. It's jointly owned property between the city and the county. At its regular meeting on September 11th, the city council unanimously adopted a resolution which authorized the lease. You need to do the same thing. You have attached a resolution which finds the property to be surplus to the county's needs for the term of the lease and approves the lease agreement. So this, again, this is not something you haven't seen before, but the resolution is new. The resolution just says that you find that property to be surplus during the term of the lease and that you're authorized us to execute.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Langley, seconded by Commissioner Brian. Any questions, Brian? All those in favor of the agreement, raise your right hand, or the lease. Vote was unanimous. I couldn't see, did you? All right, we're down to item number 16, the fiscal year-end 1718 financing package collateral and advanced projects. Brian?
Yes, sir. As we discussed, at the finance committee meeting that was recently held, the committee reviewed the proposed $3 million capital financing package. Again, that financing is a 10-year term secured by asset collateral, which simply means the asset to be improved or purchased serves as a collateral for the financing. Because there's $3 million proposed in borrowing, you need collateral in at least that amount to be able to borrow. And in an effort to not use multiple buildings, the finance committee discussed and recommended using the courthouse as the asset collateral, since a large amount of the work could be done in that area. And of course, you have to use one of the facilities that you're doing work on. They further discussed, the committee further discussed what certain dollar amount of projects you may want to do as reimbursement projects before you get final LGC approval. You currently have a reimbursement resolution in place that allows you to do that. The committee recommended authorizing up to $500,000 in financing prior to LGC approval, which we anticipate in January, at their meeting in January. The committee further recommended funding the school soccer facility land purchase as one of those reimbursement projects, with the remaining projects to be determined by staff based on priority and ability to complete within that $500,000 total limit. Again, selected projects, any that were selected based on that criteria would still have to come back to the board for final approval, so it's not the last time you'll see it. So out of that, the recommendation is that you approve using the courthouse as the asset collateral for the $3 million FY1718 capital project financing package and authorizing $1.5 million as the amount available for advanced projects. And approve proceeding with the school soccer facility land purchase in the amount of $80,000 as one of those advanced projects.
So moved.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Brian, a seconded by Commissioner Buzzio?
Question.
All right.
How much land are we talking about on the soccer field?
I think it's...
10 acres?
Yes, either 10 or 11 acres.
I've heard all kind of numbers, 3, 5, 8. I'm sorry, I don't know that. I thought my head...
I'd like to see it amended, whatever we need to do to have this property appraised.
Well, it really don't matter what it appraises for, Jerry, it's what the man's asking for.
Here we go again.
I'd like to see the property appraised and have appraisal done on it.
The question, the appraisal is a state statute requirement, right? Is that, or not? Is that, or not?
Not necessarily. I mean, I don't think you necessarily have to do that, but I mean, it's always a good practice, I think.
Okay.
That way you know what you're doing. And, and that's probably, and I'm not sure, not sure whether that was part of what the school was planning to do anyway, I can talk with Dr. Phillips about that. We're just looking at whether that's a project that you're gonna move forward with. I know they're gonna do a phase one on it, I know they gotta get surveyed, they gotta do a few things to be able to do all that.
They gotta get environmental study on it, too.
Right, that's the phase one, yes, sir.
Why don't they use the empty soccer fields up at the airport?
I mean, you know, here we are...
They won't let you do that.
Who, who won't let them do it?
The city.
Really? They won't let the school use them?
Well, first off, they're not full-size soccer fields.
So what's that got to do with anything? There is no full-size soccer field, by the way.
Not here in Beaufort County.
Well, there's not a full-size soccer...
That's the reason, that's the reason our soccer team got beat when we went to the state championship, because we had to play on a full-size soccer field.
If I may respond to that, I happen to be doing a set of plans for a soccer complex over in Greenville, and there is no statutory standard size of soccer field.
So you're not, you're saying it's not 100 yards like a football field?
No, no, it's not. There's different sizes, there's all different sizes.
75 yards wide and 125 yards deep.
That's what you say, but there's other sizes.
But when, when we go, when we go upstate to play, play for championships, we play on their full-size soccer field.
Okay.
Well, now, I still think we should find out whether they can use those fields at, over at the, uh, up, up at the center, simply because it's plenty big enough that you could lay off whatever size soccer field that you wanted up there to play on. That's the way that place is laid out, and that complex is not used during the daytime, when school is in session during the week, there's nobody up there. So why are we spending $80,000 plus probably another $80,000 before it's all over with? Because all we're, all we're talking about is the money to buy the land right now. But the truth of the matter is, when this project is over with, it's gonna cost the taxpayers at least a quarter of a million dollars to get where we need to go.
Let me tell you where, where the school system and, and the Hampak Booster Club is at. They've already raised, I think it's about 40, $40,000 to put into the soccer field. They've got donations to have the, the soccer field cleared. They've got people interested in giving large donations to, to the school system for lighting, preparation of the field, so they can go to work on it right now, they're ready to go to work on that soccer field. Oh, we got, but there, nobody's gonna, gonna start anything until we own, until we own the property.
Okay, Commissioner Busio.
This property joins the school, correct?
Yes.
So it's right there on school, well...
It's right there, right, right, you ride right by when you go to the field.
I'd like to make a motion on it if you're ready.
Well, we, we've got a motion and a second.
Oh, okay.
We're discussing. We're, we're in the discussion.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Brian, I, Mr. Brian, I understand that you said that it's a possibility that, that we get these, this $3 million in January. Is there a possibility that we don't get it? The $3 million loan.
I mean, I guess there's always that possibility.
So if we, if we front this $500,000 prior to getting this, prior to getting the loan, and it falls through, where does that $500,000 come from?
You would draw that out of fund balance.
Oh, no.
And that was, that was the discussion the finance committee had, was, you know, how far, how far are you willing to go out and, before you get that final approval? What LGC has told us is, again, Tim Ramaki said, local governments are financing these kind of projects every day, and we're approving them every day, and that it is an appropriate use of financing, and local governments, it's their decision on how they pay for projects, whether they pay as you go, whether they draw down fund balance, or whether they finance. It was not their intent. So I can't give you 100%, I mean, I obviously can't do that because there's a board, the local government has to vote on it, but, but the man who's in charge up there of that, of that debt financing section said, we see this every day, and we approve this every day.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to put all three of these in the same motion. Is there any more discussion before we take a vote?
Well, I'd like some clarification on what we're voting on.
Okay. Would you like to...
Yes, sir, and I'll be glad, we'll be glad to break them out, we just put them together. That, that, first of all, in the $3 million cloud, the, the application that we've set forth, or, back up, not the application, in the, in the financing bids that we put out, in the request for bids that we put out for financing institutions, we've got to show them what collateral we're going to put up for that $3 million loan. The finance committee recommended that we use the courthouse as that collateral, that facility is valued, in our books, at about $5 million. Otherwise, you would need to use a, a couple of buildings, because that is one of the structures that is a part of the, the construction project, a heavy piece of that construction project. It's appropriate to use that, and what we wouldn't want to do is use, use multiple ones just for, for simplicity and being able to deal with the banks. So that's the first piece of it, is to say, yes, that's what we're going to say in the bid, in the request for proposals for financing bids from banks, that the collateral will be the courthouse. Then the second piece would be that you would authorize us to move forward with up to $500,000 worth of approved projects that you've approved in this for, for refunding before the LGC gives final approval of the loan. And then that, the last piece is, of that $500,000, 80,000 of it would be this soccer complex project.
Do you, are you gonna do an appraisal of the, of the land? Or are you just gonna go out and do what you've been doing, paying people what they want? I mean, I don't see where appraisal matters anything, you paid them three times what, what it appraised for the land. At Community College, you paid $50,000 an acre for a slime spawn down at Wright's Creek. So, I, I mean, appraisals are basically useless with this group.
Well, the, the appraisal Wright's Creek was in excess of what the county paid, and it was in, the, what we paid, or the appraisal on the first bank was more than what the purchase price was. The community college property, that, that was true, that was, that payment was more than the appraised value.
And, and Wright's Creek was a farce. There was no bank involved in two of those loans, so when there's not a bank involved to control the faucet on the money, appraisals go, can go anywhere you want them to go, and that's what happened.
We've had the state auditor's office come in here, and they spent two different trips with two different people, and they've, they've gone through all the information, and they've interviewed every commissioner, and they've said that there was nothing there, so...
What they told you was your bookkeeping was accurate.
No, no, you didn't sit down on that.
They didn't, they didn't tell you that there's something, he didn't go on, they told you your bookkeeping was accurate. That's why audits aren't worth anything.
Okay. All right. Would you be willing to enter, to change the motion, and we do them one at a time?
I'll say, we'll bunch them together, yeah.
Okay. All right, we got a motion, and we've got a second to do all three things. That involves a collateral, it involves the amount of money that we're willing to spend upfront before we get the LG's approval, and then the approval of 80,000 to purchase the land for the soccer field.
That's in that $500,000.
Yeah, that's in the $500,000.
It's in the $500,000.
Yeah. Now, it's still, but that's still subject to all the guidelines that the school board and, and the county has to go by on the purchase.
You're gonna pay four, five thousand a year to keep up the soccer field after you get it. You're just adding burden on taxpayers.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
Is yours up, Jerry?
No. Okay, one, two, three, four, five. All right, those opposed, two, so the vote's five to two. All right, we're down to the solid, I mean, solid, the solar farm moratorium, and we've been, we've been asked to change our terminology to solar facility. David?
We can certainly do that, change to solar facility. I think we'll, all we need to do at this point, if, if you will mind to do this, is to put this on for a public hearing again on November 6th, which would be our, our next meeting, that'll, that'll be our second public hearing that we are required to do because you have put this for one year, so it's more than 60 days we're required to have two public hearings. That'll be the second.
Do we need a motion to proceed with, with this?
I think so.
We're not approving the moratorium.
No.
Okay.
So you're, you're in essence approving it in this format, subject to what you just had to change the, the word from, to facility, which we can do.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Busio?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor of moving forward, raise your right hand. Vote, was unanimous? Okay. Uh, we're down to item number 18, the bid offered to purchase property in Bellhaven, that's you, David?
Yes. We have a number of bids on county, county property, these are, I think all of these are foreclosures for taxes. The first in your book, on page 109, are three offers from Robin Banks. Mr. Banks has previously bought property from the county in past years, but not since I've been the county attorney, anyway. He's made these three offers, you see the addresses, 641 West Pine, Bellhaven, Pine Street, Bellhaven, 412 Railroad Street, Bellhaven. He's offered the amount of $100 per parcel of those three, and he has made a 5% deposit that I am holding for the county.
Okay, you've heard the, the report on the bids, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any, any further discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of taking the offer, raise your right hand. Is that unanimous?
Yep.
All right, you want to go to the next one, uh...
Yes, page 119, there are, well, actually, we've got 16 on that list, I'm sorry, 17 on that list, and we have taken off about halfway down, there's, you see Highway 32, Longacre Township, I apologize for the spelling of Longacre, I do know how to spell it, but Highway 32, we sold that at, I think it was the last meeting or two meetings ago to Mr. Peel, so that, that one has already been sold, we have to take that off the list. If you slide down to Wright Creek, which would be Wright's Creek Road, Bath Township, then Possum Hill Road, Bath Township, and Old County Road, Pantico Township, we are removing those three, or I'm asking you to remove them, they're all three FEMA properties that we can't sell, so, or that the county is prohibited from selling.
David, I'm, excuse me, I missed the first one that you said.
Uh, at the top was Highway 32, about halfway down, Longacre Township.
Yeah, I, I got the other two.
I thought we could sell them, subject to the FEMA restrictions.
You can transfer them to a conservation group, but you can't sell them.
Lord help us, we don't need to do any more of that stuff.
This one here is about.
Yeah.
All right, so you end up with 13, 13 parcels, I have deposits on those 13, you see what he's offered, $50 per parcel for each one of those, the detail is, is behind it, and that is, we've done business with these folks before, it's Coast to Coast Group LLC out of Winterville.
Any, any questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the offer. Got a motion by Commissioner Busio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussions, comments? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of accepting the offer, raise your right hand. All those opposed, I want to make sure, okay, it was unanimous. All right, we're down to item number 20, the CenturyLink easement agreement, Brian?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, apologize for walking this one in, occasionally we get items that come in at last minute and have in only one, maybe a month, sometimes causes us to have to walk some things in, so I apologize for that, we would like to give it to you ahead of time, but this is a easement agreement with CenturyLink for them to install a fiber optic line for the USDA office at the Farm Services Building. USDA is putting that line in for their use, it's not costing us anything, but, but CenturyLink needs the easement to be able to do that. They're also, they're also getting an easement from the city to come up and report, but the only easement they need from the county is when they cross over onto county-owned property where the Farm Service Building is located.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner, uh, Brennan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
I'm with you, boy.
You're for it? Okay, you got that, okay, unanimous. All right, we're down to item number 21, this is on the military air, uh, air rights, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I, you know, I think that just as information to property owners in the county, the military is back, playing their game, trying to get control of the air rights however they can, they, they have tried several different tricks since the OLF was defeated, and the last one was a one-mile strip that started in Jacksonville and went to Wake County and all the way back down on the north into the bombing range, and all they were trying to do was establish the price for air rights over this property. They would then have used the takings law in the US Constitution to take whatever they needed and wrote you a check for it, and that would have been the end of it. So they're back, uh, my message to farmers and property owners is, I know in the past it was a matter of going down to the Cooperative Extension Office and signing the paperwork, and they'd send you a check. Please don't do that this way. Read the contract that you're gonna be signing, because it's gonna have to be notarized. The last contract that was presented to property owners said very specifically in there, this contract can be enforced by the US Navy, okay? Now they're saying it can be enforced by the US Air Force, is my understanding, but there, there's, there is a memorandum of understanding that we found when we did the OLF stuff, between the US Department of Agriculture and the Department of Defense. Now, I have a copy of it in my office, if you give me a month, I can find it, but it's an important memorandum of understanding, because what it says is, the Defense Department will provide the money, and the USDA will go out and get the leases and the agreements to acquire whatever rights the Defense Department wants. So why are they using the USDA? Because the USDA is a respected organization among farmers and big property owners, and they need somebody that looks good to put in front of them. So to the public, to those of you out there in TV land that are watching this, be careful with these agreements. We do not, you do not need to be giving up your air rights for a small amount of money. All they want to do is get their hooks into you, once they establish prices, then they can take anything they want.
And once again, there is a hearing tonight, I can, I can say a hearing, it's an informational meeting tonight, and there'll be one tomorrow night in Columbia. So, all right, we're down to the last item, the property at 1240 Cal Farm Road here in Washington.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, you may recall, I think it was last meeting we discussed this, there are three parcels of land that Beaufort County owns that has been leased to Viden Hospital. One of those parcels of land is 1240 Cal Farm Road, which is, I, I refer to this as at the top of the hill. If you go down Brown Street, about as far as you got, go before you get to where the helicopters land for the hospital, you make a left turn, it's the beach-looking house that sits... a left turn, it's the beach-looking house that sits back in there. It used to be, I think, Dr. Alligood's.
Dermatologist.
Dermatology. Pardon, sign is still out, out front. And we agreed at that meeting, you agreed at that meeting, to try to sell these, two of these three pieces of property, and to split any funds received as a result of, of that sale. So, we've been trying to, to do that. I received this afternoon an offer on the property at 1240 Cal Farm Road, which is that property I just spoke to you about. The offer was for $15,750. I have a 5% deposit on that offer, check $787.50. I have run that offer by the attorney for Viden Hospital, and he, he is okay. He said he would be okay. As you know, what they have done, they have submitted an offer, like we've done these in the past, just like we did on these foreclosures. But they've submitted this. This will be, if acceptable by you, it will be run in the paper one time for 10 days for any upset bid of this bid for $15,750. I want to disclose to you, make sure that you understand, that the offer is to the land value only, $15,750. There is a building on that property, which is the building that I referred to, which has a value on the tax books of $107,139. That's exclusive of the land value. So, they are making an offer of the land value of $15,750.
Have they made any, any comments on what they're going to do with the, with the building itself?
Yes. They, they anticipate that they may be tearing the building down. It has some problems. It has termites, and it has some water damage.
This, this building was built around 1970, if I remember correctly.
It's, it's been there a while. And what, what they're offering to do is, whatever they do to it, if they're able to rehab it, fine. If they can't, tear it down, they're going to build something else there. But they're going to put a podiatry office, as I understand it, will be at, at that location. So, it'll go back on the tax, tax records.
But we've, we've not had any kind of an inspection made of the building.
No.
Inside and that.
Brian and I have both looked at it, in the sense that we've, we've looked over there, looked at it, you know, but we've not done.
It's right, it's right adjacent to the apartment complex where my mother lives.
And my mother-in-law.
I've, I've not been inside of it.
Yeah, no.
How long has it been vacant? A lifetime?
Oh, it's been.
Quite.
Probably 10 years.
Yeah.
The roof's not in good shape on it. It can, you know, it can be rehabbed. As a commissioner, you know, I understand it's not worth what it's on the tax books for the $117,000, as far as the structure itself goes. But just speaking for hood, I, you know, I wouldn't entertain an offer of less than $40,000, you know. I would, I would be willing to vote for that, but I, I can't for this.
All right. My biggest problem is, we've not had anybody look at the inside and give us some, you know, estimate.
I, I know they have. They're here tonight. If you'd like to hear from them, they've had somebody look at the inside. I've just explained to them, it's not my job to sell this one way or the other. I'm just laying it out to you, and let, let you make the decision. So, they, they volunteered to come and answer any questions.
Would you, would one of you or both of you, you might come into the podium? Do you, would you, would you like to tell us, you've been in it, I'm assuming and everything?
Several times. We've had Terminex come and give a report.
Could you pull that mic a little closer to you?
We've had Terminex come and gave us a report. There's termites in every room. The, all the windows leak. I've had AR Cheston come out there, give us an estimate. We were, we're looking at this property. We thought we would rehab it. And the more we dig into it, the worse shape unfortunately we're finding. They think it was a modular, built back in '72. Rot is throughout the building. Again, we were hoping it was going to be a rehab.
Initially, we wanted to change the roofline so that I could have just a bit more space, but still within that same footprint, in order to use the curb and gutter that's there. But because of the nature of the building and it being modular, they're not sure how much it can be expanded. The other issue is that if we did replace all of the windows, the, where the two pieces come together, there's not a lot of flashing, and so it will be an ongoing problem of leakage.
This, this is not a brick structure. This is a wooden.
No, sir. It's, it's a modular unit that was brought in. We also got an estimate to, if we were to have the building demolished, what was it, 16?
Little over $16,000.
From B.E. Singleton.
Tear it down and completely, completely remove it. We're looking to replace it with about a 2,000-square-foot modern office building.
So, you're, you're looking at the cost of the lot at the 15, plus another 16 to demolish?
We're already at a loss. That's right. The, the demo is more than tax value on the lot itself.
So, you would have $30,000 plus in it?
That's right, before we even lay the first brick.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did y'all get a price on rehabbing the building?
Well, from what Cheston is saying, that it's probably not structurally sound to do that. If you go in there, every room has, has.
There's a lot of.
Water damage. There's, there's a lot of damage in there.
Significant rot.
That was our intention, is to rehab it.
Any mold that you saw?
Yes. Throughout. And like I said, Terminex was just there last Thursday and gave us a report. Termites in every room. So.
Any, anybody have a question or a comment? Do you mind, I think you introduced yourself.
I'm sorry, David Ainsley.
Sorry, Ainsley Resavlin. This is my husband, David Resavlin. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, all the commissioners. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
All right. If there's no other questions, or, then we'll.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we, we move to, to let them purchase the land.
At the offer?
At the offer.
Okay. We got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any, any discussion?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, it's not a purchase. It's a start the upset offer.
Okay. You correct me at every meeting, I don't know.
And we're aware of that as well.
Okay. So, it will, it will be publicized for an upset bid. Any other questions before we take a vote? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All right, all those opposed? I just, I'm just making sure. Okay, it was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second to adjourn.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, same.
Second. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand.